Call please.
Mayor Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak. Bartholomew.
Here.
Kopczynski.
Here.
Betsy Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Five councillors present, your honor.
Well, thank you very much. And agenda is, so city manager's here. So Peter, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. I know we have a lot of work to do today.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And good afternoon. You know, this evening, we're going to carry on the work that was initiated at our January fifteenth strategic planning workshop. It was really good to see councillors energetically engaged that Saturday. And we on the staff remain very grateful for your, for your energy and your leadership, your continued engagement in this strategic planning process. Sarah Singer Wilson helped us through that day, and she'll be guiding us again this evening. At the workshop, you'll recall that there was a request to more formally, if I can use that word, review the current strategic plan to reorient to the city's current mission, vision, values and goals. Sarah will also guide us through the goal refinement process. We'll review ideas that were identified during the visioning exercise, during the context mapping conversation and the idea mapping exercise, and begin discussion of the emerging themes that come out of that. These themes will be further refined and used to inform the engagement strategy as we prepare to reach out to the community in the coming months. So with that, let me keep that real short and turn to Sarah and ask her to take over from here. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. And welcome to the meeting today.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all again and looking forward to continuing this work. And so to get us started, as Peter mentioned, and last time you all expressed an interest in reviewing the, the current strategic plan. So I'm going to just start by sharing my screen here and taking us through a few slides. Just a moment. Okay, so. So we'll do just a quick overview of what's in the current strategic plan, just to reorient you. I, I don't, I don't want to spend, go into too much detail, but we have staff present to ask, answer any questions in case any detailed questions come up. But just provide a high level overview of, of the current context of the plan. And then talk more about the update process and where we're headed. Then we'll talk a little bit about some community engagement goals and some strategies for, for how we might get there. And then get into our refinement process, which, which is where I hope we do the bulk of our time this evening. So with that, just in thinking, or just in reviewing the current strategic plan, this was adopted back in January of two thousand nineteen. And the updates to the plan had been presented and shared with the council, presented by staff and shared with the council and adopted on a, on a regular, on a regular basis. And so the mission that's stated in this plan is to provide, providing quality public services for a better Albany community. So when you think about your mission statement, that's really your purpose for why, why the organization exists. And then the vision that's currently stated in that plan is a vital and diverse community that promotes a high quality of life great neighborhoods, balanced economic growth and quality public services. What's reassuring about reading that vision statement is that that really resonates with a lot of the themes that we talked about in our vision exercise during the January fifteenth workshop. You guys touched on all of those themes in that exercise. And so it still feels very relevant for the direction where you want to head. As far as the goals that are in your current plan, it's organized into four goal areas. And as stated in the current structure of the plan, those goal areas aren't something that will change dramatically over the course of time. As of right now, they're focused on great neighborhoods. So creating and sustaining a city of diverse neighborhoods where residents feel good about where they live, providing an efficient transportation system with safe streets and alternative mode of transportation, and then providing effective stewardship of Albany's significant natural, cultural and historic resources. And then providing diverse recreational education and cultural opportunities that enrich the lives of citizens. So those are the four goal areas. So just in, in summary there. Hold on one second. Technical glitch. So the four goal areas are really, it's around great neighborhoods, a healthy economy, effective government and a safe city. Those are, those are the four overarching goal areas. And under each of those goal areas are the, it's more specific objectives. And those are the things that we're really interested and focused on updating this, in this update. And they should be updated to be more reflective of the, the current community needs and desires. So as we were thinking in our, when we were going through our context mapping in our last exercise, we had, we talked about some of the current things happening in the Albany community. So I want to go back to, sorry, I was having a technical difficulty there for a moment. So let me see if I can fix that. Okay. Let me go back to my share here. So in updating the plan, we want to make sure that those, those objectives, while still aligned with the, those current, those four goal areas are also aligned with current community values and needs. This update of the plan provides an opportunity to check in with the community and make sure we're staying in line with what they want. So if you recall, but from our presentation back in November, when we were talking about the goals for, for this project, we did our goal setting workshop where we talked about what the city council wants and how that's going to align with the citywide strategic plan. Identifying, communicating the alignment of the citizen survey, the strategic plan, the council goals, and then how that ties into your, the development of your biennial budget. So we're going to talk about kind of that big picture look in just a moment. And then it will be, over time, as the city goes through the engagement process, and we'll be providing some ongoing strategic planning support. And then the fourth thing we'll be doing is building through this process, a collaborative and cohesive team through the engagement plan and the engagement and plan development process. So we shift over to, and thinking about the alignment piece, how the, what the big picture looks like. So the path we're headed towards is every four years, the city would look at doing a, a larger update, a more comprehensive update of the strategic plan. So what we're doing right now, going out to the community, thinking about what the context is, engaging with the community and, and thinking about what they need and how we need to update maybe some of those objectives under the goal areas. If you look to the right here, and after those, that update of the strategic plan, every two years, the council would do some goal setting, similar to what we're doing now, and some self evaluation of how those goals are going and, and how the council's doing and helping to move those goals forward. Every two years, another thing that happens is checking in with the community and doing this community survey. Also, some organizational outreach. So looking inward at the, within the context of the organization and what's happening there, they're the ones, the staff is implementing the goals and responsible for doing that. And so there's always contextual things happening internally that need to be considered as the goal, to try and help the goals move forward. And then finally, doing a strategic plan check in. So how are we doing on the goals and the objectives? All of this ties into that biennial budget process. So thinking about how do we need to align resources with the goals identified in the strategic plan to help move it forward. On the other side of this, down, every annually, departments are setting their work plans and, and helping to set the goals for the, for their departments. And so that strategic plan update also informs that. So again, in thinking about why this work is really important, it helps to give direction to the organization and, and, and make sure that what the work that the departments are doing is in alignment with what the council wants and what the community wants. So hopefully that helps to bring a little clarity to, to the big picture. So this year is part of the, yeah, see a question from councillor Novak.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you referred a, a few times now to the organization. I, I could use a little clarity on, when you say organization, what are you referring to? Are you referring, I, I, I'm not clear on what you're referring to when you say the organization.
Sure. So that's city staff, your departments, the ones carrying out, carrying out the work and implementing that work.
Okay, so the organization is city staff. And may I also ask a question because I recall the last time we met, which was, you know, the first time we met as a group, being told that we hadn't really reviewed the strategic plan in, in number of years. And then the first slide that you showed us tonight was that they had done something in January of two thousand nineteen. So I don't know what I missed. So there was actually a review of the strategic plan in two thousand nineteen, last, in January of two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, I'm gonna, if city manager Johnson wants to address the question.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm trying to figure this out.
Let's make sure we're on the same page.
It's been councillor Novak, it's been the council's process to, to have the city staff review and update the strategic plan on a regular basis. And then that plan would be presented to the, to the council for their approval, review and approval. The way in which this is different and what hasn't happened in many years, and I, I, I have heard years like two thousand and seven, but I don't know exactly when it last happened. It was when the, when the council themselves, and maybe councillor Smith might know the answer. But when the councillors themselves were involved in actually overhauling or even creating a new strategic plan and providing input as opposed to having the staff provide the input and then the council just approving that input. So Marilyn, would you have anything to add to that in terms of history?
I could, yes. The, the staff, up until maybe two years ago, staff, or staff would review the plan presented to the council and the council would review it in a work session, usually in January or February, make any changes. Councillor Kopczynski has been one of the really good, taken a deep dive into the, into the weeds of it and looking at it very closely. Councillor Johnson as well, that I recall anyway, right now, but it has had an annual review by the council and the staff, not anything at, at the depth that we're doing here. This has been, been a very long time since we've done this kind of a look at the strategic plan. But that's the, the updates of the plan are reflected in the document itself in the back where it shows which strategies and, and objectives have been accomplished each year. There's a considerably long list of what's been accomplished since the plan was first written in two thousand and seven.
Thank you. So then just to, just to get this straight in my head, in January of two thousand nineteen, it was a review of the plan, a review was presented to the council and the council reviewed the plan in two thousand nineteen, January?
That's correct. Yes, following, following, following a staff effort to collect information from different departments and update the, the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Yeah. So what's different about this process is that if, can you all see my screen? Okay, good. What's different about this process and, and kind of recognizing the shift is that you guys are here in this comprehensive update of the plan. Whereas in the past, it was, it was more just this, this check in and, and just making adjustments to the plan. Does that help bring a little clarity? Good. And then, so this is the system that you'd be moving towards. And so again, just giving, providing a little more definition around how these pieces tie together. The comprehensive update helps to get everything aligned, taking into consideration the current environmental context of your community. It'll then go to inform those work plans every year to make sure staff's work is aligned with what's in the plan. And then every two years, leading up to your budget process, you're doing a council goal setting and evaluating how, you know, where the council's at on meeting goals, checking in with your community and doing that survey, checking in with the organization to make sure you're accounting for any, any needs there, your, any staff needs. And then doing this strategic plan check in, kind of the light update to make sure that things are still in alignment moving forward. And then that will guide, go into your budget process. I want to skip forward a couple of slides. We'll come back to this community engagement piece. Because I think this timeline also really helps to illustrate what this is, what this looks like this year, and then how it directly will tie into your budget process. So we kicked off the strategic plan process here in January. We're doing our goal refinement. We'll develop an engagement strategy. So again, I'm going to circle back to that in a moment and talk about engaging the community in this process. And then from there, in March through May, some public engagement will happen and, and talking with your community to see, you know, make sure that we're in alignment with community needs and desires. So April, there'll be also some organizational engagement that will happen. So again, that check in with staff to see, make sure that there's support there. We'll do an update with the council in April to begin sharing some of the themes that we're hearing from the community outreach, as well as maybe some other things that might be coming up with city staff and the organizational update or organizational engagement. And then wrap that engagement up by May and have all of the key themes identified. So then in June, we'll come back and share with the council the engagement results. The strategic planning team, so internally, will begin to prepare a draft plan based on all of those results, the results of all of the outreach. And we'll share that with staff, the community and any other stakeholder groups that need to comment on that for, for additional review and input. And then in July, we'll begin the strategic plan wrap up and bring it back to the council for review and adoption. In August, we can celebrate that work and begin plan implementation. And then that directly feeds into your budget process. So as I highlighted in the other graphic, that biennial budget process, that starts, that kickoff is in October. That's when all of the information begins, you, staff begins to gather that up and you guys prepare for your budgeting process. In next January, you'll be doing, the city manager will be providing that budget outlook and forecast. February through March, you do the, sorry, I think, oh, city manager budget outlook and forecast. Not sure if that's a typo. I think that's correct. And then staff can correct me if I'm wrong on that. April and May, the proposed budget goes to the budget committee for review and discussion. And then in June, you do your budget adoption for the next biennium and your new fiscal year starts in July. So hopefully that helps to illustrate how those pieces fit together and feed right into that biennial budget process. Any questions on that? I'm going to go back to just talking a little bit about the community engagement piece of this. So the organization, so staff will be leading the engagement efforts with the community and a couple of goals that they've outlined here for the community engagement piece is first just around alignment. So discovering and exploring areas of alignment between the community and the council goals. So we're going to do some refinement of the council goals tonight. And that's really going to guide, guide some of the questions that we'll be asking to the community. And looking to see where some of the ideas that bubble up from that outreach align with some of the things that the council is also saying. As far as, and programs and services, we'll be identifying areas where the city can improve communication about services and programs, as well as identifying any new programs and services that may be needed. So when you go to do community outreach, oftentimes you'll start to hear questions or, or people will express needs and there may already be a service or program that aligns with that, that need. And so that provides an opportunity for just additional communication. But not always. Sometimes there are new programs or services that are needed. And so anyhow, we'll, we'll learn more about that when we hear from the community. Opportunities for input. So just another goal is just increasing opportunities for the public to provide regular input. There's lots of opportunities for engagement throughout the year and through the public process. But this provides a special and unique opportunity for people to, to step up and get engaged and share their ideas. And then finally, the last goal is just overall an improved public perception. So through this process, being able to identify community needs and ultimately show some positive change in public perception through communications and engagement. So in that next community survey, when that happens again in two years, be able to highlight some of the change, you know, maybe you see increased approval ratings because you're being able to be more responsive to the community's needs. So those are some of the goals that staff outlined for the engagement. As far as some targeted stakeholder groups, again, hearing from the council last time, there's a strong desire to increase engagement with youth. So thinking how we can engage leadership groups, maybe government classes, connecting with families. So maybe there's opportunities to connect with people, with more families at community events, engaging some of the city civic groups. So Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, citizen advisory group members. So you've got city, different city boards and committees or advisory groups. So making sure you're engaging folks from those areas of interest, older adults. So there's older adults that maybe need, are engaged at the meet the mayor events. And then finally, city staff. So making sure that we're engaging the organization in this process as well. Any questions about the engagement, the engagement piece? So that will happen March through May. With then some follow up in June. All right. Just want to pause for a moment and see if we have any questions. Yeah, councillor Novak?
Yeah, I had a question and then I hit my unmute and I fell out of my head. It had to do with community engagement, I think. Um, well, I do know that I, I was wondering because it says that one of the goals was to improve public perception. Do we have some input that has been presented to staff with regard to public perception? That is saying people aren't looking favorably at who? Staff, council, everything having to do with city government? I don't know anything about that.
I think that was in reference to the community survey. So the community survey happens every two years and it provides a snapshot of the community's perception on city services. And so I don't think that there's a, there's a problem with it. I think the results from the last community survey were pretty favorable. But the goal going forward is, is to make sure that that is, is maintained and maybe even improved. City staff, is there any, any additional comments on the, the community survey?
No, not really. And it's our goal to make the community survey a more regular occurrence. In the past, it's been kind of here and there, not on a regular schedule. And so it's our, one of our goals to put that in line with this process and make it an every two year. The results from the, the two thousand twenty community survey were generally pretty favorable. But if you recall, they were benchmarked against communities of similar size. And on a fair number of those questions, we got a, a below average rating. And so it's one of our goals through this process to show some improvement in that that we can, that we can see through the data. So does that answer your question, councillor?
Yeah, it helps. So thank you very much. So if I'm hearing you correctly, then there was a community outreach and the last one was in two thousand twenty and there was some feedback and compared to other communities, our size at that time in two thousand twenty, people were saying we could do better. So.
Yeah, we can always do better.
We could always do better. Everybody knows that. But so, may I ask, how has this outreach to the community been done in the past? And how are we, what are we looking, how are we looking to change that? Probably Sarah's going to go there, but I don't know how it's done in the past.
So in relation to the strategic planning process, sorry, Sarah, didn't mean to just been there. In relation to the strategic planning process, you know, this, I think councillor Smith actually alluded to it. Input from council, as far as the strategic plan, hasn't really been a regular occurrence. And so a lot of this stuff is new. And in terms of engaging with the various stakeholder groups, like for instance, the mayor and I have just begun reaching out to youth as one of those stakeholder groups. So it's not so much what we've done in the past, it's what we want to do going forward. And I'll pass it over. I see a number of hands raised here, so.
Thank you. Mayor Johnson?
Thoughts of city manager, I think he, I'll go after that.
Just to, to, to respond to councillor Novak's question regarding the past and how it's been done. Jorge Salinas, our deputy city manager, ran the survey the times that, that I can remember it. And he, he would design it, and I don't know what format he used, Matt. I think it was a, a PDF questionnaire. But what we're aiming to do, last time we did this was, was we used the, the National Community Survey, which, as Matt mentioned, is benchmarked against other communities of our size and also has the advantage of having professionally designed polling questions. So it's a, it's a step up in, in the professionalized professionalism of the survey. And we'd like to install a little bit of discipline in the process too, so that we have it at a regular interval, as you saw in Sarah's slides.
Yeah, just to hit off of that, I believe Jorge, when he ran it himself in two thousand fourteen, was running off the pattern that Bob Woods used in two thousand eight, which was the previous community survey. So he was trying to, I think Jorge was trying to maintain some consistency amongst the questions that were asked in two thousand eight. The benefit of standardizing on this National Community Survey is that work is done for us with the added benefit of community benchmarking. So, and you'll be hearing more about that on Wednesday night, but does that answer your question? Okay.
Yes. If I could just add one more tag onto that. So these, in the past, you have surveyed people and gotten input from the community through online. Was it all done online? How was it?
The, the two thousand eight survey, I believe they did some paper copies, but I think in two thousand fourteen, if I recall correctly, it was done entirely online. And that was, I think, a, a budget cost savings. However, it, it does kind of throw it into question the statistical validity of it. That was also a benefit of the way we did it with the National Community Survey in two thousand twenty was that it included postcard, random postcard drawing that made that, that survey statistically valid.
So not entirely online. That's good.
Yes. It had to be filled out online. And that did present some, some challenges, but I know that we did walk a couple people through the survey. Two thousand twenty was unique in that we didn't have some of the resources that possibly will be open to us in the next survey cycle. For instance, if we wanted to do essentially an in-person or paper-based version of that, there's certainly that possibility now that the Riverfront Community Center has reopened and, you know, possibly leveraging the library as well as a place that could be used for that offline survey. As you know, postage is very expensive. So as mo, as much as we can minimize that, the better. But we certainly want to give opportunity to everyone to participate.
Councillor Novak, it's also interesting to note that Matt brings up the question, the statistical validity. So the random selection of respondents is critical to that. But we wanted, the last time we did this, we wanted to also give the opportunity to others to fill out the survey. So there were forms available here at City Hall. And people were able to fill those forms out. Now, interestingly, as you, as we kept the results separate, results from the statistical, statistically valid sample from those which were presented back to us by people who self-selected to fill out the form. Interestingly, they weren't that far apart. They were pretty close together. So it, it is, it is something that, you know, you'd, you'd expect, oh, maybe somebody would stuff a ballot box or that somehow you would have some anomalies, but there weren't any.
I, I actually, it would never occurred to me. I, I actually, it would never occur to me in a million years that someone would stuff a ballot box with regard to this type of survey. It's not a vote. I, I'm just wondering, like, how much of a response do you get from the community at large on these things? I don't, I'm sorry, though, I don't want to take any more time away from the presentation.
I, I don't know that number right offhand, but all of those results are posted on our website from not only the 2020 survey, but all the way back previous to 2008. I think there's one on there, older than that. And it does have the, the total number in there, but I don't have that number right now.
Thank you. I can appreciate that people see things online. I just think, I'm not so sure how many regular Joes who've just been working and trying to keep their heads above water would even go to a city website to fill out a form about something that prior to this conversation and being on the council myself, I didn't even know it existed. And, and that seems to be in a lot of government agencies, the way they do it is like, well, we have a website, go to the website. Well, what if that wouldn't cross a lot of people's mind in a million years. While I can appreciate it, though, I'm not trying to say that a website isn't a valid means of communication. I'm just wondering how many people are actually having the time in their lives or would even, would, would it even cross their minds to do such a thing? That's all. I, I'm just, I have no idea.
Yeah. So just on the last comment on the community survey, so I just was figured out or had our background information here. So there were 462 completed responses and 4,500 randomly selected households were invited to participate. And then the responses are weighted to reflect the demographics based on the 2010 census data. So the National Community Survey, which you guys used in 2020, is a company that does this service for cities across the country. And the benefit of using that company is that you get to have all of this data that's benchmarked to help just, it's, again, it's one data point of many, as you're mentioning. Not everybody gets a chance to take this, but they do try to select a sample that will provide, that will be statistically valid to give the city yet another data point as far as how we're doing. And so in our engagement goals, this is really an opportunity, again, to use that, use that chance to check in and say, are we moving the mark? Are we getting better as far as how we're listening to people in the community and what they want, what they need? And then how we're doing and achieving our goals. So hopefully that, that's helpful. Mayor Johnson, you've had your hand up for a while. I know you had another comment or question.
Yes, I would just like, as Counselor Novak alluded that a lot of people and the demographic that I serve professionally do not have access to computers or they don't use computers. And so as a result of that, I would love to have a a hand tool, so to speak, that can be delivered to communities. Also, there's a lot of engagement from younger people. And so something along like of an app or something like that, or something soft that we can give to teachers or QR code that we can give to teachers that can scan in and they can do the survey in their leadership classes. Because there's a lot of high school seniors and juniors that are watching. The viewership has gone up tremendously and the number of people, young people that reached out to me has gone up tremendously, much higher than before the previous two years. And so I like to keep that in mind as we go forward. A hand tool would be a paper copy that can be distributed to them individually and or picked up. And then a tool for the youth that are using their smartphones to communicate and do all their business. And so those are something I'd like to see going forward. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. We've got those noted for the engagement strategy. Counselor Novak, did you have another?
I, I was also wondering with regard to paper copies, you know, the mayor just mentioned having them for older folks who might not really do computer. I'm wondering if in a place of business, if there weren't surveys there, hard copy surveys that I could have them available when people come into my restaurant, people from the community, and they could take it and fill it out. I know it's maybe, it's, maybe it's not very orthodox, but I'd certainly be willing in order to get more input from people who actually live in the town, who may be clueless again about going to a website for something. And I appreciate the fact that, that the national people are specific with regard to trying to get a broad demographic. I'm just thinking, you know, the more options we have for getting input, I should think that would be the more, the better. I, I don't know. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, just to be clear. So the National Survey is one that you guys do every two years. And for, for this process, for the update of the strategic plan, we are going to be doing some outreach. And so I just want to share again, the, some of the targeted stakeholders here that we'll be reaching out to. And so again, youth, families, civic groups, citizen advisory group members, older adults, city, even city staff. So we've really we're going to try to reach as many people as possible. And then just some of the examples, you know, through leadership groups, community events, in, in just other events where, to make sure that we're reaching everybody. And so if there's questions that we're asking, yes, we certainly can use paper surveys and they have those at businesses and Matt's going to be coordinating that. So Matt, I don't know if you want to talk anymore about the tools that, some of the tools you had in mind for doing that.
Yeah. So I, I mean, just broadly, you know, there's a lot of talk about an app and paper surveys and, and we will use all of the tools at our disposal within our price range to collect the largest group of data that we can. Not to go back to paper survey, but just keep in mind that while that is important and we should be using all available avenues, that is also a a burden, I guess, on staff to tabulate all of those. So I'm not saying that we won't do it. I'm just saying, keep that in mind, that everything has a, a cost to it, whether it's incurred through a company like Polco or city staff time. So in regards to the, the stakeholder groups, is that what you were asking, Sarah?
Yeah, just a preview of some of the tools that we've talked about, talked about using to help gather some input around the strategic plan.
Yeah. So, you know, in terms of, I, I hinted a little bit at it earlier, but the mayor and I have started through the through the guise of the If I Were Mayor contest to engage with our local schools. That relationship is building and very positive based on what we saw from west so far. And highly encourage south and Albany options, if you're listening. We're ready for you. But, you know, there, there's several with the chamber and Rotary, obviously, you know, we have the ability to go do presentations with them. We talked about booths at farmer's market when the weather starts getting nicer. In terms of the older adult community, I want to leverage some of the work that the mayor's already been doing with outreach events there. And I think Counselor Smith, you participated in one or more of those. But really just a getting out into the community and leveraging some of those existing events. And we have the community conversations events that we are still trying to establish a regular schedule for. Obviously, you know, we're still, we're still in pandemic mode and that's been a challenge. But that should be changing soon, hopefully. And we'll be able to do more in-person engagement events. I don't know if you want me to go into more detail than that, but.
I think that's, thanks for the overview, Matt. Any other questions just about the process or engagement? Or kind of where we're headed? I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page before we finish this, this refinement process and gathering this input from the council at this phase. Okay.
I, I think we're, we're prepared.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I think we're ready to go.
All right, let's do it. So the next piece of this, I'm going to share the goal refinement process. So I want, here's our process, just looking, zooming out for a moment. And so first, we already just reoriented the council to the four goal areas. So for, in the current strategic plan, so great neighborhoods, a safe city, a healthy economy and effective government. Next, I just want to just take us back quickly to look at what we did and refresh your memory of what we did in the last workshop. So the context map, the themes and ideas that emerged from that. And then take a look at the idea map, the focus areas from the idea mapping exercise and some of the specific ideas that emerged in that discussion. So we'll reorient there. And then this will be part, the main part of our discussion tonight is to share, present and propose ideas for goal refinement. So asking the council to take a look at all of those ideas and things that we talked about the last time and propose your ideas for refinement. So there are ideas that emerged in the visioning, the context mapping, the idea mapping exercise. And I've regrouped those for tonight's conversation under those four, four goal areas from the strategic plan. We'll have you all review the ideas and then offer further refinement on that. This work tonight will help, not only it will be the summary, it will create a summary of those, those council goals here, but they'll inform the engagement strategy and the questions that we ask the community as we prepare to go out and gather their input on the strategic plan. So again, we'll form some questions based on these ideas. And, and then the community will have their chance to, to weigh in during the next, the coming months and our next steps at the project. So that's the process that we're going to embark on tonight. Any questions about that? All right, let's do just a quick review of our work from last time. So if you recall, last time we did the visioning stories, where you got in and talked about your headlines. And there were lots of different ideas that came up through here. So while these ideas may not have all come up in the idea mapping exercise, we made sure that they are present in the ideas you're going to review tonight under those four goal areas. So we had our three groups and then the themes that came out is that, you know, community livability is the outcome that you're zeroing in on. Using economic development as a tool for that, thinking about diverse housing options for, for people in your community. How do we diversify housing, employment and recreation opportunities? Making sure we're considering all aspects, so including public safety, walkability. So those were some of the making, those were some of the themes that came out of that visioning exercise, as well as the, the waterfront project and redevelopment efforts. That was the other one that I missed. In addition to the vision themes, if you remember this graphic, we talked about the community context. So just thinking about the economic climate, knowing that inflation, budget challenges, CPI, all of those things are, play into the economic climate, the political factors, the opportunities that we discussed. So, you know, things like the economic development plan, traffic planning in sync with new development, getting more youth involved. So lots of things that we talked about under the opportunities. Talked about technology factors, how we've seen an uptick in engagement and how do we maintain that momentum? We also talked about other community trends around public transportation. Thinking about the federal money or state money that's, that's going to be coming in to, to support paying for some of the challenges we're experiencing, uncertainties, talks about reserves, the unknown, unknown nature of federal and state mandates. And then we talked about some challenges, so just staffing challenges, ADA stuff, just the challenges of dealing with growth. So just kind of reorienting you all to that context map. From the context, then we went in and thought about, okay, well, based on the vision, where we want to head, the context, where we are now, what are some ideas that we have for the future? And so we organized those around these various themes around housing, infrastructure, long-range planning, smart growth, fiscal sustainability, partnerships, engagement and civic pride. And so all of these ideas were now transferred over into these four goal areas. So while we had them organized in all those idea areas, we went ahead and reorganized them, kind of reframed some of those, some of the things you guys mapped out during your brainstorming were commentary and some of them were specific ideas. So we worked with, we worked with staff in trying to kind of reframe them into action items or things that felt more actionable and to get us started for tonight's discussion. And again, organize them in those four goal areas of a healthy economy, great neighborhoods, effective government and a safe city. I will say that in trying to reorganize some of these, many of them could fall under multiple categories. So just know that that that's the case. And if you, if you disagree with where we put them, we can certainly re-categorize them. That's not a big deal, but for, we had to start somewhere. So we did our best to organize them accordingly. So where we are now, I just am hoping we can move through each of these four areas and talk about some of the ideas to get some proposals from the council for refinement. As far as it, it does this reflect what you want to see for the future and the future direction? Or do we need to refine these, refine these actions further and, and have more conversation? So I thought we could just start with a healthy economy. And some of the ideas you had here were provide living wage jobs, affordable housing, opportunities and activities and attractions, support a diverse economy with a focus on attracting high tech and rare metals industry. Support business development in South and East Albany, promote trades and vocational training, develop an economic development plan. Explore options for the future of the airport, attract a destination hotel in downtown, support the development of the waterfront and explore the feasibility of constructing a bridge across the river. So those were some of the ideas that came up last time in support of a healthy economy. So this is an opportunity to add what's missing, what needs refinement, or maybe if, if this is not being reflected accurately, what do we need to change? Counselor Smith?
The first thing that jumps out at me and the only thing right now is the phrase, provide living wage jobs. Other than doing that for our own staff, we can't affect the community that way, but we can certainly encourage businesses and industry that, that locate here to provide living wage jobs. We have done that in the past through the enterprise zone exemptions and and actively seeking out businesses that, that pay enough money to live on. So I think provide is a, an unfortunate choice of verb there.
Okay, so maybe it's support or encourage?
Yeah.
Counselor Kupinski?
Yes, I think one thing that ties several of these together, kind of a glue, I would call it, for lack of a better description, is strongly planning or working towards retaining existing businesses. Because they're already here and contributing. And sometimes they struggle with attracting, you know, qualified people and having the ability to expand and having the resources to, to do so. So we, if we don't involve them in all of this, the classic example would be like when Lowe's warehouse opened up. Lot of it was developing around the new Lowe's store that was here in town. And then there was ancillary businesses that came in to relocate adjacent to their big warehouse, simply because of the collaborative agreements between all of them, just to make things happen. And the community is doing great in general. We just need to, we can't force a company to come to Albany and we can't give away all the resources we have just to attract a single company. I mean, that is self-defeating as far as I'm concerned, so.
Okay, so it's an objective around maybe retaining exist, existing businesses. Mayor Johnson?
So, so I, I agree with Counselor Kupinski on, on that note, but one of the things I, I think would be great there would be develop an economic, a living economic development plan. And that goes to retention of business, that goes to encouraging other businesses to come to town. It also goes to provide, you know, helping, excuse me, partnering with other organizations, create training opportunities for existing residents. Because when a corporation comes to town, they're going to bring their staff that they know, like and trust with them. But we want them also to look at our, our citizens as potential employees. So we have Oregon State grads, Oregon grads, we have grads all over the valley. We also have a land bid committee in college we can partner with to create We also have a lend bit in college we can partner with to create programs for training for those folks that will be qualified to work there. So I think economic development plan is a huge one. And then that ties into a lot of the other ones. You know, the waterfront redevelopment will attract the business or types of business to come to town. There's a lot of things that stem from economic development that would be beneficial if we had a strong economic development plan. And we, we look at that plan on a regular basis like this, like the strategic plan.
Yeah, so I'm just pulling over some of these ideas that tie into something that would, that would come off of a economic development plan. Counselor Smith?
Once again, one word at a time is what I tend to see. I'm seeing the word support and promote in several of these stickies. And I think that that supporting local business, new and, new and old. And promoting expansion, retention, development, those are things that. Those are, those are a good role for city government to be in a, in a support and promote position. For business development and retention through helping people through the, through permitting process, finding property. All of the above. So I, I, if we're going to condense anything here. I think that those sum up the city's role in working with businesses to keep the economy healthy.
Agreed.
So support and promote.
And so would, would we develop or adopt, develop, develop and adopt an economic development strategy? Would that sound better than plan?
And we'll get into wordsmithing these more with, with staff and bring back a, a more polished version to, to the council. But I just, again, I want to make sure that we have the council intent is clear. And we have a good understanding of, of what you want to move forward and we can, we can refine the language. Counselor Johnson?
Yes, um, as the things were, before they were moved around, I saw about the, the trades. And more vocational things. We worked with LBCC for a long time on the getting. People trained here in Albany for the companies that we already have here and those coming in. And I can't see where that went.
It's right here.
Oh, there it is. It was under, it was under our faces. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
But yeah, I mean, that is, that is so important that, you know. Contractors, metal workers, painters, and nobody can find workers anymore that want to work. And so it is so important that we work, maybe we work with LBCC again. And, you know, really support the training. But I, I think the schools are still doing a little bit of it, but I'm not sure, but that's very important. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Smith?
One more thing has occurred to me that we have, we're talking about high level strategy and planning. And we have some specific projects here that, that may need to be in a, in a space by themselves. The, the third bridge across the river, the airport and the destination hotel. Those are, are things that people care about, but they're, they're, they're not, they don't fit in the, in the high planning strategy kind of realm.
I concur, yeah.
Yeah, so again, when we get to the final version of the plan, we will make sure that there's consistency across. But we try not to limit or lose any of the ideas that are, are captured through the brainstorming exercise. So I will make sure to note that these are more, these are ideas for specific actions to give staff additional context. Okay. Any, anything else regarding a healthy economy? Are you, is the council good with how this is shaping up? As far as the high level strategy options, so support and encourage living wage jobs, affordable housing opportunities, activities and attractions. Develop and, and adopt an economic development strategy. Which would include a lot of these, these other pieces related to the waterfront. You know, attracting and retaining high tech and rare metals industry as well as, you know, promoting trades and vocational training. All, an economic development strategy would, would look at all of those things.
Yeah, I do, I do have one thing. If you go back to the one with affordable housing. So I would, instead of affordable housing, because in, in this country, affordable housing means low income. I would say housing affordability, which includes affordable housing, making a mixed use housing, that's, you know, density. It includes all the housing. We have a task force going right now to address, you know, to come up with ideas for affordable housing, you know, housing affordability versus just affordable housing.
Okay, got it. I have that noted. All right, staff, any clarifications needed on, from your perspective? When you think about these ideas for a healthy economy?
I'll just note, I, Mayor, I'm glad you brought up that last point while housing development is not necessarily core work of economic development. In fact, there's this huge transit intersection and, and lots of ways. And one is going to be buildable lands. And I think this is captured a little bit in terms of supporting development in South and East Albany. But at the core of that's going to be creating and supporting shovel-ready buildable lands. And those have an impact for both residential development, industrial development, job creation. So they, they really work hand in hand.
All right. Thank you, Seth. Any other staff clarifications or questions or comments around the ideas we've captured for healthy economy? All right, I don't see any. Next, we have great neighborhoods. So quite a few ideas that came up during our last workshop around great neighborhoods. So activities and attractions for people of all ages, including seniors, that was a specific one. Increase the number of preschools, provide more opportunities that promote healthy living and active recreation. Develop a climate resiliency plan, facilitate more cultural events. Work with affordable housing developers to provide housing options for all income levels. Diversify housing types to support housing opportunities for all populations. Facilitate neighborhood beautification efforts to improve safety and engagement in our neighborhoods. Enhance mobility by expanding and improving traffic flow and extending the bike, bike lanes network. Improve mobility through the development of a connected and safe pedestrian network. Develop a plan to maintain the city's assets and core infrastructure and support the development of walkable neighborhoods. So those were some of the ideas that came up there. Counselor Smith?
Two things. The first is increase the number of preschools. The city isn't in the preschool business to begin with. We could perhaps encourage private industry or encourage the school district to. Consider preschools as part of the overall educational system, but I don't, I'm not sure how that got there. The other things that I'm looking at are all of. About three fifths of the second row all relate to. Different types of mobility. And while there's housing too, but there's the, the whole mobility network, bicycling, walking, connectivity. That could be summed up in a, that's, that should be part, that is part of our transportation system plan. And to encourage the emphasizing those portions of the transportation plan. Not just vehicular traffic. That would, I, I, that, I think that could be squished into one.
Would you feel comfortable adding accessibility?
Absolutely. It's, it's not walkable, it's not bikeable if it's not accessible.
Right.
Thanks.
All right, so we could group this into one action around, you know, implementing the city's transportation system plan. With some specific wording for some.
This is great, this is great neighborhoods, correct?
Yes, we're in great neighborhoods.
I like that.
Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I think if we're talking about mobility, we should also include. People who have mobility, limited mobility in terms of people who, to whom ADA legislation would apply. Because when you're talking about, for instance, I'm looking at diversify housing types to support housing opportunities for all populations. I want to note on the record that that needs to include people who have limited mobility. And I don't mean riding a bike. I mean, people, we don't apparently have. I, I just learned today for the first time, maybe because I've never bought a house. But generally, if, if you're wanting to build a house or buy a house, when you're building a house, they show you plans for like three or four different kinds of houses. And none of the plans include for people in a wheelchair. So that's, that's part of our population. And I think they're, they're being sorely neglected. And if we're going to talk about improving things for people in our community. That segment of our population definitely needs representation.
So is that in? Accessibility, like so its own, its own goal around accessibility?
Well, it, it has to do with housing and everything else, but there, there needs to be housing for people who in wheelchairs. We don't have that. I just had a discussion with a gentleman today and there, there's just a huge amount of neglect along those lines, I think. And we need to do something about that because there are a number of, number of people in our community who, who. This is their life and we need to address it. So that's all. I just wanted to, to note that, especially in light of my conversation today.
So I'm just trying to again, get some clarification because Counselor Smith's done a, a nice shot of making sure we're being mindful of the city's role. And how to, how to influence these things. And so when we think about the city's role and related to accessibility to housing. I don't know, staff, if you can shed some light so that we make sure we're refining these comments and getting, and make sure we're all on the same page. Regarding clarity for an action item for this.
Right, and I don't know if Matthew Rutgers is online, but he may be able to comment on what role the city can play. In helping the market to respond to a demand for housing of that type. So Matthew, are you online?
I am, if you guys can hear me. So obviously, you know, this is one of the things that we will be talking about with the housing affordability task force. You know, we actually do have an advocate that's on that task force. But, you know, in general, when we talk about especially private developers building private homes. Their requirement to basically build plans that are either, have some form of, of accessibility. To whether it be wheelchair or whatever that might be, that the city doesn't have a whole lot of influence on how that actually gets built. Or what they're required to build for, for privately constructed homes. Now, when we talk about getting into multifamily, like apartments, there are requirements in the building code. That does have a certain number of units that will have to be accessible units. So we're, we are a little bit limited in what we can and can't require. Hopefully that helped answer your question.
It, it helps, but if, if I may, because we're focusing in this grouping especially, but as a city council on housing issues. And the ADA, that's a federal thing. And so, and I know it's a state thing as well. So I should think that we do have some kind of responsibility there to have a, some degree of housing. Especially if we're developing housing. Isn't there some portion according to ADA rules that has to be created for folks? And isn't that like an ADA thing? I don't know all of the, all of the guidelines. But it seems to me like I could see that that might be something that we are required to do that maybe we haven't been doing. I want to make sure that, that if, since we're focusing on providing housing for a diverse. Set of constituents, a diverse set of, of people who live in this town, that we're, that we're not neglecting that group of people.
And admittedly, I am not an ADA expert. To, to my knowledge, on the, we talked about single family homes or standalone units. That there, there isn't a requirement on our end that we could provide or require that. Now, again, talk about apartments, multifamily, there, there are some requirements from building codes that, that does require it. So we, we can certainly look for, or check into that a little bit more for you, Counselor Novak, and see if we can find out.
I appreciate that because I'm not an expert either, but I know there, there are an awful lot of barriers to individuals. Who are, who have accessibility difficulties, challenges, whatever you want to call it. In terms of even upgrading a house to code because of the way the codes have changed. Then you end up having to spend $400,000 and you have a $650,000 house in a $200,000 neighborhood. And so there are things, I think there are things we can do to help, is all I'm trying to say. And I think we, we need to do them.
So private, so with Counselor Novak, so I work with, I deal with all this, all the time with my client base. There are, there are handyman, there are contractors that specifically do upgrades to existing residences for ADA compliance. For access mobility devices, but also when a person goes in to buy a new residence, a single family residence. The developers do have additional, different sets of plans to meet that requirement for people that have mobility or access, accessibility issues. So as far as the building codes per Matthew Director Rutgers, there are plans, there are requirements that we have that, that are required by the building code. But as far as the individual, single family residence, it's up to the owner of that property and/or the resident that goes from a. Non-ADA situation to an ADA situation. Make those, and I, and what I do for my clients is I provide them a list of three people that have, that can meet those guidelines. To help them change their property so they can have greater access. So the city can't, like Matthew said, the city can't mandate a single family builder to build so many homes. The people that purchase those lots, they want to dictate what they put on those lots.
All right, I want to see if there are any other comments regarding any of the other. I feel like we've talked, we talked about the mobility actions here. The city's influence regarding preschools. Is everybody in support of these, the other actions that are listed here around is developing a plan to maintain the city's assets and core infrastructure? Yeah, Counselor Smith?
Yeah.
And we consolidate the facilitate more cultural events with provide activities and attractions for people of all ages.
Very good, yes.
Seems like.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks.
Yeah, and these were all of the, kind of pulled these ideas in just from your, from your other groupings without really changing the language yet. So we wanted it to still look familiar, but yes, it would absolutely make sense to do some groupings there.
And the one with the affordable housing in the far top right, top right, that I, that's, was that great neighborhoods? That, that kind of dovetails into one of the ones we talked about earlier.
These two?
Yeah, this one here, yeah, housing affordability.
Yeah.
Affordable housing by developers and the versatile housing. Under housing affordability.
Okay. Okay, I've got it.
It is hot in here, good lord.
All right, any other, any other items that need additional discussion or staff, any comments area? Counselor Novak?
Yeah, the one that you just had your pointer on a second ago, develop a climate resiliency plan. I could use a little elaboration.
Yeah, this came up during our last workshop. And I believe there's a state requirement that's associated with this for all communities over. For all communities over a certain population to develop climate resiliency plans.
I know there's a state trend, I don't know that there's, there are trends, but I don't know, I mean, what exactly are we supposed to do, what, what is that?
Yeah, Matthew Rutgers is going to weigh in on this and tell us what.
Thank you.
Latest, thank you.
Sure, not a problem, so the, there was a governor's order, an executive order that is going to, they're actually in rulemaking right now. For climate friendly and equitable communities. Plan that's going on, as rulemaking is delivered to us. Will be starting to kind of work through that, you know, there. There's another portion of that, a lot of jurisdictions bigger than ours do have a, you know, this is going to be a state kind of. And actually, they're going to be helping with some of the funding and providing funding for consultants, but a lot of communities do have like a climate action plan. Albany has not started that, I'm, I'm not sure if that was what the intent of, of develop a climate resiliency plan was when this was put in there. But there, there's going to be at least a small piece of that, that's going to be coming our way in the next couple of months as far as starting to work on it.
So we're supposed to somehow be able to control the climate? With our.
So I think, again, this was an idea that came up in several of the conversations during the last workshop. And I, I don't think the intent was under and control the climate, but it was more, how do we, how do we maintain our. Our environmental assets and making sure that we're protecting, protecting the environment as best we can to serve future generations in Albany. I think that was the intent that, the intent that I heard and.
Yeah, we used to have a business in Albany when I was a little kid and it created some really stinky pollution, but it's. It doesn't exist anymore and I'm just wondering what it is that we're, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to take you all off topic, but I look at that and it just, I just, it makes me want to snort.
Are there, any other comments from the council on this, this topic?
I do know that I'm, I'm expected to receive some information this week regarding what legislature is doing. And I'll just make sure I get it to Peter and staff and then go from there.
Okay. Any other comments on or questions or clarifications on any of the other actions here? So we've got, we'll do some refinement of these and consolidating the language and, and creating some objectives around. The cultural events and activities and attractions around housing affordability, around mobility. Change the language around the, this one here on preschools and in the others, are there. We had a lot of conversation around this one in particular last time around neighborhood beautification efforts to improve safety and engagement, so. Yeah, Counselor Olson? You're on mute, if you're. Counselor Olson, you're on mute.
Counselor Olson, you're still muted, sir. Matthew, can you, can Matt, can you unmute him?
No, I can't, I can only request that he unmute.
They can use spacebar and see if that unmutes you? You have a spacebar?
Well, he just lowered his hand.
There is right there.
I'm going to stop the share for a second, see, sometimes that makes the bar, toolbar look different. Alright, Counselor Olson, can you? There you are.
Yeah.
What was your comment?
Thing on my, my picture didn't work with the one on the lower. Control bar did. The question I have is, how many state rules and regulations are there and how expensive are they to make a house? A typical newer house ADA available? And is it something that's difficult to do?
As far as making a house ADA accessible? The expense of that?
People have trouble with our building official and I'm wondering if, how much trouble he's had with. State rules and regulations about making a, a house or a building ADA accessible. And I don't see him, he looks like maybe he's gone home. Oh, there he is, right next door.
Sarah, I can jump in here, so that, actually, so Dick, I, I'm not the building official, but so he's, he's not on, Jonathan's not on tonight. But as far as, you know, I'd have to work on or look at exact numbers, but. I think it'd be highly dependent on how much of the home you wanted to be accessible, how big the home was, how many bedrooms it had, how many bathrooms it had. I mean, there, there's a lot of variables there that would, would go into determining what that cost is, so I, I'm happy to, if you want to send me an email. Outside of this, I can, maybe a general idea of a size of home and we could see if we could get a rough estimate of what that would be.
Well, I'm not interested in a particular home, I'm just interested in a house in general, being able to get in the front door. Be my main concern.
I, I can take a look at some numbers and have those for you.
Sarah, I just, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have.
I'm wondering about state rules, regulations and. Things that would be in the way.
Peter, you had a.
Thanks, thanks, sir, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have till 6:30 this evening, because you have kindly agreed to go a half hour over, so. We have two and a half hours and, you know, we're asking for you to help refine goals. If there are things, specific things, we will return to them, because remember, this is kind of helping us develop a work plan for the next five years. So we will certainly come back with things that are identified in this process, but right now, it's a question of refining these goals for you.
And okay, I'll shut up.
No, no, sir, that wasn't meant that way.
Alright, I think we're, I'm going to go back to the share here now that we've cleared up that issue. Let's see. There we go. Okay, so I think we're getting close on great neighborhoods here, any other comments or questions about these ones in purple here? That remain that we haven't talked about, or does everybody feel good with how these, the actions under this school area are shaping up? Okay, let's move to the next one here under effective government. Alright, so some of the ideas that came up during our last workshop were around preparing a succession plan. Cybersecurity, advocating for state and federal funds to support local infrastructure projects. Coordinating grant opportunities to address funding needs. Access or, I'm sorry, assess opportunities to improve government efficiency such as process improvement, optimization of technology or automation. Ensure all people are housed and have access to wraparound services. Implementing youth advisory council, develop a city communications and engagement strategy. Align infrastructure standards with Lynn County. Develop targeted partnerships with community partners to advance the city's goals. And evaluate public investment tools that would support the advancement of city goals. So those were some of the ideas that were talked about last time that align with effective government. Any questions, comments, clarifications here, Counselor Kucinski?
I'm just trying to simplify it, appears the coordinate grant opportunities to address funding needs is similarly. Connected to evaluate public investment tools that would support advancement of the city goals.
This one, so the grant opportunities, these were a little different and when I was looking through the comments from last time, because there was. There were some specific comments around like tax increment financing and, and public investment tools like that, so I. While I put them next to each other, because maybe there's, there's some relation or they're in the same neighborhood, they were a little bit different. At the context.
The same. Alignment might be said for the adjacent advocate, the state federal funds to support infrastructure projects.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes, the last one on the right, ensure all people are housed and have access to wraparound services, we can't ensure anything as far as housing. And so that, if we could figure out a different way to phrase that. And I don't have an idea, we can't. No way you can ensure it.
I see when you go on Counselor Johnson, how about the one that says develop targeted partnerships with community partners? To come with that, right, so like Dove Northwest, CSC, all the different nonprofits would be, I, I think, I think, is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, I see now.
Services through those community partners, I think that would be, would make more sense to me anyway.
Yeah, something along that line, because there's no way that you're gonna, I mean. You, you just can't ensure that everybody's going to be housed.
Because I know we have the community development, the community, community development commission that does, you know, grant, community development block grants. For nonprofits to support issues for people that have low income or, or unhoused or, or has experiencing housing insecurity. So. So that will be supporting the wraparound services, I think that'd be a great place for that.
Where is?
The part, targeted partnerships.
Okay.
Because like Counselor Johnson said, we can't ensure everybody's house, because some people were going to be unhoused by choice, some people are unchoused. We can't find them, or there's barriers to being in a shelter or more for personal, permanent housing. I think Counselor Bartholomew might want to chime in here and kind of lead us through that part of it.
Yeah. Thanks, Counselor Bartholomew, and then Chris Bailey, and then Counselor Novak.
Thank you, it, it's. There are things the city can do in terms of supporting, in terms of housing, whereas supporting. Some of the legislation of the CDCs, you know, you know, helping facilitate those kinds of things as well as supporting the. Like, like Mayor Johnson has said. To partner with those organizations and we talked about having a, a city. Coordinator for service, a city services coordinator.
So that would, so, okay. Chris Bailey?
Just to clarify the, the green bullet there, develop targeted partnerships with community partners to advance city goals. That was one of the things that came out of one of the workgroups I remember being in and it was about way more than housing, I think we talked about. You know, justice center and downtown business goals and all sorts of things that. Partnerships might help us get further along than we could by ourselves. So just so that, that doesn't get pigeonholed only with housing, and I think was intended to apply to a lot of things.
I think, yeah, that'd be a great, great catch, Chris, Dr. Bailey.
Yeah, so I, I had lots of comments around those partnerships, which is why it's, it's written in a more general way. And then there were a lot of specific contextual notes that would, so we left it under effective government and as kind of a more general objective. So we'll put it next to housing for now, but yes, we do have all of those notes that reference all of those various partnerships that could, that could be leveraged. Counselor Novak?
Yes, thank you, I know that Counselor Johnson was saying we can't in any way ensure that there's a roof over everybody's head. But I said in my first breakout session, and I probably reiterated it in the second one, it, it wasn't really reported. But in the first one, I, I mentioned having spoken with someone. Who's very high up in the Chamber of Commerce, they had a situation in Eugene, there's some sort of, forgive me, I can't think of, of what it's called, but it's like a. It's a, a center basically where they have beds enough for, they, they did that, you know, point in time. You do this point in time surveys and you find out how many people are unhoused and if you have a facility. With beds to accommodate every person who's currently not housed, you can in fact. Offer them this place and it's not an option then, you have, you don't, you no longer have an option to be on the street or under a bridge or in a ravine. You can't be camping out, if there are beds enough, if you have a facility that will provide beds enough for every person who's unhoused. Then you have a facility for them, and I spoke about it, having different levels of service, where some people. Could, some people are just down on their luck, they just had some bad things happen, couldn't make the rent, had to live in the car, whatever, I've known people like that. And, and they're, they're capable of functioning in society, they have just had some really extenuating harsh circumstances that could happen to anyone. Then, on the other end of the spectrum, you have people who, as has been mentioned, are out there on the street by choice. But I would submit to you that you can in fact. Make it so that they don't have an option of being on the street, if you have a facility that will provide a bed and a roof over their head. And it's been my dream since running for the council that we could develop a facility. That would be able to train people, that would be able to help certain people just with their medications, so that they're, so that they're not wandering around the streets. Yelling at the top of their lungs, half undressed, because there are segments of the population that, and maybe they could, maybe they could get better. And, and whatever, but at, at this point in time, we all know some of them, we've all come across them, they're just, they're just, they need help. And they won't take their medications on their own, who knows if they even have their medications, but there are facilities in the state and around the country. And our city manager has shared information about places where these facilities exist, we could create such a place. And have, as I say, beds enough where being on the street would not be an option and we could indeed ensure. That we didn't have people on the streets, that is something that I feel really strongly about, I know you can tell. And it's something that I'm devoted and committed to bringing about to the best of my abilities, so help me God. With partnerships, with, you know, nonprofits, whatever, I just have a dream of nobody on the street. And with helping people in whatever ways they're capable of being helped, whether it's job training, whether it's help with the medications, whatever it is. To, to, to have it, have, have people not be on the streets in our town, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Novak, Counselor Bartholomew, and then Counselor Johnson?
Just to help folks understand that the legislation that. Is really happening is that. We are required to not. Illegalize that person's behavior if there isn't enough space. For them, if there isn't a place for them, that is, that's what the ruling is about and I appreciate the idea that. It's to try and encourage us to create more. Housing of various forms so that people are not in that situation, so I just wanted to make that clarification, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bartholomew, Counselor Johnson?
Okay, yeah, and I guess maybe one of the ways is like work to ensure, because I agree with Counselor Novak and Bartholomew. I mean, I've had this thought, and I'm going to make it real quick, have I had this thought for years? That. If they, if we have a large building. I mean, I always think of it as a Quonset hut, I mean, don't, don't picture it that way, but okay, to where you have someplace. For the people to go, that would. We would be able to use that. As a, say workaround or to make them safe and also to where they, they couldn't. They didn't have the right. They didn't have the right to be on our sidewalks and, you know, where they. Well, where they shouldn't be. And so that was my thought, uh, when I said you can't ensure. I mean, if we went with that, we would have, maybe we could work to ensure. And, you know. Say you have a, a piece of city property, you build something on it, and then you work with all the different organizations who could help man it. And, and get them to, uh. Wait, and the people, okay. If you have someplace for them to go. Then they can be on the streets, and if they are on the streets, then you have some leverage to, um, do whatever needs to be done. So that was my idea, and I do agree, you know. And sure, at this time we can't, but if we're looking into the future, I think that's one way to go. I mean. You could build a whole bunch of tiny homes and stuff, but then that's not gonna, uh, it's not gonna do for most of them, you know? They just need a place to stay even for a short time. So, uh, I would say work to ensure maybe, uh, or work to. Just need help with the verbiage. I, I don't know the best way, but that, but that's my idea is to make.
How about strive to ensure?
Excellent. I like strive. Strive work, yeah, strive to ensure. And, um, I think it's something that we need to look with. I don't know if we still have some of that money that we were given from federal government that we could use for something like that? You know, it doesn't have to be fancy. That's why I used the Quonset hut type thing, uh, example is that, you know, if it's metal, it can't be burned down, that type of a thing. You could separate it, you know, different ways to do that, but I like that strive. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Smith?
Just wanted to point out that these are very good ideas, um, but we need to factor in that, um. Every human being housed or unhoused is exercising free will. And. Oftentimes that will, um, get in the way of the good intentions of people who think that they have a better situation to offer them.
Thank, and, and to add to that, because of the free will in our laws, I don't know if the city attorney's on. But if we snatch somebody up and put them in a shelter, that could be called kidnapping. Or legal arrest. So we have to be careful with what we do with them.
Yeah, but it would be, it would be their choice. We have a place for you to go, and if you don't choose to go, then that's the choice.
That's my understanding of how these, this is how it was explained to me, and it already exists.
So then.
Okay, sorry, I just wanna call kind of point of order because everybody's jumping in and talking, um. Let's see, Counselor Novak had her hand raised, but I think that you had clarified your point, uh, Peter?
Uh, thank you, Sarah. I was just gonna make the point that you just did and remind people that we're not gonna solve the problem tonight. So we're trying to refine goals again. So you can hear about progress on all these goals at a future meeting. And we'll do, we've got a lot of work cut out for us, but tonight we've got to do the goals.
Yep, thank you.
So I just wanted to check in with staff at this point too, to make sure that we're getting some, some clear direction on this, and this feels, um. This feels actionable. So just, it's supporting, right now we have supporting partners in providing access to housing. Um, to, or to ensure that people have access to housing and the wraparound services and, and striving to ensure that all people are, are housed. And that feel, do we get, capture that correctly? Does that feel clear now?
I, I, I would, uh. Once again, say that we can't really ensure anything. So supporting and striving and working toward are all good things, but we really can't ensure.
Okay. We'll just change that to right access. Okay, any, any other questions, comments on this one? Any comments or questions on some of these others? The succession plan, uh, for the city feels pretty straightforward. Communications and engagement strategy. There were a lot of ideas around this one, so kind of consolidate, consolidated those. And a communications and engagement strategy to support and engage and inform citizenry and build trust. Cybersecurity came up last time. That one felt pretty straightforward. Aligning infrastructure standards with Lynn County. I don't know if that one needs any clarification. I wasn't part of that breakout group, so I wasn't completely sure what that, what that one entailed, but.
That would be, uh, Matt Rutgers could speak on that, Matthew Rutgers, and Chris Bailey. Director Bailey.
Yeah, Sarah, that came from our group, but I think it's one of the other examples of the partnership concept that we were talking about. I think.
Okay.
The partnership thing is, um. Um, oh wait, infrastructure standards. I don't know what infrastructure standards is. I was, sorry, I was thinking about the Justice Center, um. One, I'm, I'm sorry, speaking on the wrong thing.
That's okay.
Well, like one of the things you talk about sewers and water pipes and things like that, wouldn't that be part of that?
Yeah, I guess I would just say, I don't know where this came from, but I would say we would not. We would wanna be careful because, uh, the county, for instance, doesn't really have standards on piped infrastructure. So I'm not sure where this came from. Uh, it wasn't in my group.
Counselor Smith has a hand up. Maybe she can. Maybe she has information on this one.
I expect this has something to do with road building.
Um.
Or, or building streets to urban standards versus county standards, ditches and ditches versus sidewalks.
And.
I think that's probably where that came from.
And I wonder if, since it says Lynn County and not Benton County, if it has to do with the urban fringe and.
Yep.
There. But I, I, I wasn't part of that group either, so I don't know if somebody's online who was, but.
Yeah, right. Right now, I'm not sure if this is, feels very actionable, if we don't know what it means, so I'm, I'm tempted to propose taking it off the list. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a lot of gray.
Okay. You can remove that. Um, is, any of these others feel unclear? Implementing Youth Advisory Council feels very straightforward. Assess opportunities to improve government efficiencies such as process improvement, optimization of technology and automation. Counselor Novak?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, because other folks have pointed out, and I think you maybe were about to get there, where it's still, we still have one ensure that needs to be dealt with. Ensure all people are, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I have the notes over here that, that go with that. I'm just keeping it on there for record keeping purposes, with the notes highlighted in yellow. Yep. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments about any of these others? Other ideas? Yeah, Counselor Johnson?
What does the first one mean? Prepare a succession plan for City of Albany.
So. My boss is next. What was that? I'm tired.
Oh, and prepare for who comes next? That's a good one.
Yeah, so the succession planning, again, this is a, uh, falls under the goal of effective government. So ensuring that there's, um, there's some planning effort to, to, as people retire and move on. That, um, the city's being thoughtful about how you train and, um, our support training efforts for folks to move into those positions.
Oh, okay, all right.
Which Counselor Johnson, I'll tell you, is, is happening right now. So. It's, it's good to see this year, but we, we are doing.
Okay. Good deal. All right.
And then our, our next report, staff has been evaluating these ideas that came up from the last workshop. To also highlight some examples of how some of these things are already being worked on, as you just alluded to. So, uh, some of these actions are, are already underway and budgeted for in your current fiscal year, and there's, there's some headway being made. So you'll get an update on that at, at our next check-in. All right, anything else on, on this action or any of the actions under effective government?
Well, don't think so.
Okay.
Hey.
Last, the last area then we have are, uh, is the, is Safe City. And, um, three ideas that fell under this goal area, which were around exploring options for crime prevention through environmental design. Um, facilitating a partnership with the county for law enforcement. And develop a shared parking structure and justice center in partnership with the county. So those were three, three ideas that surfaced from our last workshop. And start with Mayor Johnson.
I, I would like to see something as far as Safe City, that our, our public safety folks have, uh, mental health. Uh, access and, and, uh, a, a process to, to, to take better care of themselves. I know Chief Harden and the Police Department did some, uh, uh, chief, can you explain what you guys did the last time I was at your police department with the, the group that came on? Did the testing?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's, uh, we went with a medical group called Sigma Tactical Wellness. Um, one of the things we've learned, uh, by age forty-five, over half first responders, police, fire, uh, dispatch have early cardiac disease. Uh, and due to the nature of our work, uh, cardiac events could be tied to workplace, uh, and, and workplace injury. Which has a cost to the city. That didn't drive our decision, but we did a comprehensive medical exam, probably more comprehensive than, uh, your standard visit to a doctor. Uh, and were able to do some early interventions, uh, and potentially prevent some heart attacks. Um, it was voluntarily, uh, it was voluntary participation by our staff, uh, about ninety percent of our staff participated. Uh, and, uh, it was an enormous cost to the city.
Yeah, thank you, chief. And another thing is that in my work as an insurance agent, one of the things I see reports of is, uh, incidents of cancer amongst. Uh, fire department personnel because of the work that they do. So I think that prevention or at least catching things early is really important. So we need to have, make sure that our health insurance is, is, uh. Meeting those needs because the earlier, earlier you catch it, the least likelihood of, of losing that person on the front line is, 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 uh, possible. So, uh, I think we should focus, not focus, but at least spend some cycles around how to make that better for our staff.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Counselor Novak?
Thank you. Um, under Safe City, the second and third boxes are very straightforward to my way of thinking. But I could use a little elaboration clarification on the first one, explore options for crime prevention through environmental design.
Uh, great question, Counselor. Uh, it is a fairly well-known fact. We actually have a specialist that will go out and advise homeowners, businesses on ways that they can take action in design of their property. Or landscaping and the like to reduce the likelihood that they would be victims of crimes, better lighting, kind of vector foliage. Uh, and things like that. We, we would also recommend that if, uh, something like if we put in a new. Trail through a wooded area that we put lighting in and things like that, so that it makes it, uh, safe for people to use during hours of darkness. So that, that's the concept behind it.
Thank you so much. That makes perfect sense.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, Counselor Smith?
I have a question about the third box, develop a shared parking structure and justice center in partnership with the county. Are we talking about the, um, Benton County Justice Center that's already in the works? Are we talking about Lynn County? I don't know where this came from, and I, I didn't know that if this is a Lynn County ca- uh, topic, that they were talking about this again. That's news to me.
Uh, Chief, did you wanna, was this one you wanted to comment on?
Yeah, uh, Counselor Smith, it could be the Benton County one, uh, which is, uh, headed towards the ballot. In twenty twenty-four, uh, but it, I think there's also, uh, with some discussion in one of my group. About what the Lynn County Courthouse and, uh, that area looks like. They just got a grant for, uh, an add-on, I believe, uh, to the courthouse. And that impact to the downtown core. But, uh, there's two counties to consider here as far as that. There is always talk, very, very loose talk about a regional. Uh, justice center for, uh, a jail, which there's money up front, but down the road it can be a cost savings, but there's nothing formalized in that regard.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Counselor Kaczynski, is yours related to this as well?
Yes, yes, uh, uh, just another acronym for Counselor Novak, uh. Crime prevention through SEPTA, uh, through, uh, environmental design at SEPTED. They've had some wonderful, wonderful results over the years. Then jump shift into something else, the, we can't forget that there's a huge number of people in the organization, uh, that are already doing, uh. Wonderful, wonderful work, and we can't be jumping on, trying to create whole new cloth, and we've gotta keep supporting all of those folks already doing a good job, so.
Thank you, Surfer. Yet another acronym.
Uh, Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I was gonna say, I, if, the last one may have, I've heard talk about the. It's right beside the Health Department building where. At one time, a long time ago, the county and the city had talked about making a joint parking structure there. And I've heard that recently there's been some talk, um, is, you know, it's kind of secondhand stuff. But I think that might be where that's coming from, to where you have parking, and then you have the Justice Center on the, the bottom floor or something like that. That's the only thing that I can think of, but I had heard that, not in our group, but, um, I had heard someone else talk about it, so, thank you.
All right, um, I'm gonna just maybe go back and get some clarity. Oh, Counselor Novak, did you have another?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you. I had my hand up with regard to that last one. I believe my second breakout group talked about that, um. Shared parking structure. It's too small now to see. That, that last one, we were, thank you, thanks for your help. Uh, shared parking structure, Justice Center, um, and it was about Lynn County. I just wanted to clarify. I think I remember discussing that in my second breakout group. It was that we were definitely referring to Lynn County.
Right. Um, it's, and just kind of checking in, is that, does that make sense to the rest of you on the council to, to support that action? And that's in support of a safe city?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. All right, um, let's see, any other questions or comments on these, on these three actions in support of a safe city? Does that feel, any clarifications needed from staff on, on what these mean, or does this all make sense? Yeah, Counselor Johnson? Oh, you're on mute.
But I remember, I lowered my hand. Uh, it says facilitate partnership with Lynn County for law enforcement. Now, does that have, like. To work with them with the jail, or what does that mean? Elaborate just a little, maybe? Thank you.
Uh, well, it, it should be noted, we have a number of partnerships with both counties. Uh, currently, we, uh, share SWAT team responsibilities, our narcotics team, uh, the major crimes team are all intermixed. I think as the valley grows, we work, uh, to enhance those partnerships. Uh, we don't have the single staff to handle, uh, a major incident by ourselves, and so it's just to enhance those. Uh, nobody's talking about replacing law enforcement with a different agency or anything like that.
Yeah, thank you, chief. I was, I was thinking that after you started talking about it, yes, it's the, with the, the line group. And, and all the, uh, cooperation between the different agencies, yeah, it's going very well, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Johnson?
So. I'm concerned about, as far as Safe City, the, when the fire department goes out and hooks up to a fire hydrant, I'd like water to come out of it every time. So I, I think there needs to be something in far as safety infrastructure, uh, in this. Because, uh, my concern is as Albany is expanding out east and down south. Uh, that my, our fire department, first responders will show up, hook up a truck, and no water comes out of the fire hydrant. So I think, ensure, um, I don't know how you would say it, but, uh, maybe the city manager gets wordsmithed to where infrastructure, the public safety is. Maintained at the. I, I can't say responsible, but a, uh.
We can, we can certainly wordsmith it, but infrastructure would support public safety.
I mean, we're adding out in East Albany, South Albany, infrastructure, we're adding infill. I, I'd love. I'd, I'd love, I think all of us would really appreciate the water coming out of the hydrant, just when something does happen. That's all.
Okay, got that noted. Yeah, Counselor Kuzinski?
Yes, just uh collaboration and partnership with the county is, is paramount across all sorts of uh venues. Uh, just a little concern would be, would that have any effect, uh, depending on how it's structured, I guess. On the levies that we do, they and us, uh, or are people gonna see cross pollination and it might. Potentially harm one or both.
Um, anyone from staff wanna comment on that? As far as the impact on the levies?
Uh, Counselor Kuzinski, could you repeat that question just?
Well, I guess, I guess my concern would be if we're collaborating uh with the county on a parking structure and or. Uh, it says facilitate partnership with law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. Would that have any impact potentially on us going out and asking uh to maintain or increase a levy for. Similar services if now some of it is coming cross-platform with, with the county?
Right, and, and I don't, you know, it's impossible to say that right now. Um, this is. What you're looking at here, the, the, the shared parking structure and justice center or uh partnerships with the county for law enforcement, these are all. Um, good things to pursue in terms of trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. How it would, how it would affect the level of service and therefore what we need to get from the, from the public safety levy. Uh, I think that would be, there would, there would definitely be an interplay, but it's impossible to say what that would be now.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I just was a little concerned when uh the mayor said. Making sure water comes out when the fire department goes to hook up to, has that ever happened, sir? I mean, that hasn't happened, that the fire department has gone out somewhere to hook up and water hasn't come out of a hydrant. I'm, that a little bit stopped my heart.
Heard it one time in my neighborhood.
Pardon me?
I've heard it one time in my neighborhood.
Okay, so that's, that's not good. I had no idea that had ever happened before. Thank you. Um, I just, I, I just didn't know if you were making something up, or if we had actual occurrences.
My, my neighbors had no problem knocking on my front door.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's not good. That's not good. I, I never would have thought such a thing was possible, actually.
All right, I think the city manager's gonna respond to that as well.
Right, well, you know, the, the fire department regularly goes around and checks pressure, if I'm not mistaken, but I, you know. Uh, I think the mayor's point was that as we continue to develop east, in East Albany, we need to make sure. That the infrastructure in that part of the city is robust enough to support. Public safety response. And, and I would, I would go further and also say that from a safety, a safe city perspective. You also want to have safe drinking water, water that, that is clean. And also you want to be able to handle your wastewater uh and in a safe way. So that's something that doesn't appear in here yet, and, and the council, I would respectfully submit, may want to include, include that as a part of the safe city.
I, I think all water is via that.
But is, don't some of these things go without saying, or do we actually have to say them?
Never, never assume anything.
Okay.
Well, so again, in strategic planning, just, that's a great question. Um, Counselor Novak, do things need to go without saying, and I think. When you put things in a document like this, yes, there are, there are services that the city is responsible for. Um, part of the core services that are offered, but when you put things in, in a document like this, it elevates the importance of it and says, these are. This is a priority um to meet the current demands, and so in thinking about the growth that Albany is experiencing, putting something like. That in this plan wouldn't be, I mean, that, it, it would make sense and, and the, just. You know, and knowing that you have to be investing in this kind of infrastructure to keep up with the growth that your community is experiencing.
Okay, and if I might address what the city manager said a moment ago, I did actually understand the mayor's point, that he was talking about growth. But I was also taken aback by the thought that, that. It, it was even possible that the, the fire department could come and hook up to a hydrant and then get no water. So I, I did understand him clearly, and I, I just had never heard about that even happening, so I, I wanted to ask because. That's such a horrifying thought, so thank you.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, and, um, so we had some additions here for the, um, for a safe city. And some clarifications, but are you guys, this is looking, looking good? Are you happy with how this is coming together?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Missing anything?
So one of the, one of the things that I heard early on when I was elected the first time. Was people complaining about the. Um, lighting in their neighborhoods being out and they're afraid to walk their dogs in the evening or, or early morning. So I think some education on our website about if you have a light out. Uh, or stop sign blocked by trees, or some, somewhere they would have a tool or resource that they could get. A way to fix those issues. Um, I fixed, I showed the people that reached out to me how to do it, but um. I, I think a broader effort to inform people would really help me. And what the chief of police said about your shrubbery, pushing things back from your home, I think that's a whole part of that.
All right, thanks, Mayor. I've got that noted. Counselor Smith, did you have some, sorry, I saw a hand up and then.
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna mention that we, um, the streetlight out. Um, information is prominently displayed on our website, and that's a frequent question that we get from people, and. It links directly, that's a specific power issue, and it links directly to them. But again, that addresses the, where do you go if you don't use the website?
Right.
Okay.
But couldn't an individual call the city and, and they would get direction, right, if they didn't know what to do?
Happens every day.
Every day.
Okay.
All right, anything else regarding a safe city? All right, I think we have, if there are no other comments here, I think we have enough. Um, clarification to dev- fully develop these into some action items. Um, of, under each of the goal areas for the council goals, and we'll be able to use this to. Develop some questions as we begin uh to put the public engagement strategy together. And as staff goes out to the community to start asking questions about what they want to see, um, to help inform the strategic plan, so. Just to kind of reorient back to our process, where did it go? Here we are. And so we have all of the ideas for the refinement, and I think we're ready to wrap this portion up. If there aren't any other questions. All right, so then the last piece, um, that we were going to talk about during the. Uh, the last workshop, just kind of as we finish this continuation, was we had talked about. Um, the roles of, of policy and administration, policy being the council and administration being staff. And the last question was just, uh, to wrap this up, is what does the council need to um. Work together as a team to move, move some of these goals and things that we've talked about, how to move them forward. And so what do you need, so just, I want you to reflect on that uh for a moment, what do you need from the, from your fellow counselors? And what do you need from staff, and that'll kind of be our last reflection question to wrap this up, because I think. Um, depending on what themes we hear from your responses, we can put, to craft a, a little team agreement statement. As far as how you're gonna work together as a team to move, move these things forward. And so I think that would be a nice way to, to close out our conversation, because that's how we started. We started with your roles. And, um, and, and how you want to work together in this system of a council manager form of government, and this would be a nice way to close it. So, any thoughts on that? I'll just go around to front, to each counselor, so what you need from your fellow counselors? And then what you need from staff to, to help you move these things forward. Anybody want to start us out? Yeah, yeah, Counselor Kuzinski?
Okay, I'll put my foot in my mouth, why not? Uh, basically, uh, I'd like to um make sure that once we make a decision, we move forward. And then get behind it and support the city staff that has to implement that decision. Uh, because they've got the, they've got the rough road. Uh, it's easy for us to sit here on our high salaries that we're getting and, and make a highfalutin. Uh, decision, and then expect the uh, the, all the line staff to just run out and jump for joy and say, oh, yippee. Look at what we get to do again. Um, I don't think that's quite fair, and I think that once we make a decision, we should move forward and. Help the staff then do everything they possibly can to make it come to fruition.
All right, thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Anybody want to go next? Otherwise, I'll just start calling. Okay, Counselor Smith?
I would, uh, I'll, uh, second Counselor Kupcinski's remarks and add that I, I think it's very important that we listen to each other. And not just let it slide off, but, but um take it in and, and consider what each, what we're saying to each other about. Anything, um. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
So Counselor Johnson, then I'll go, I'll go last, so go with Counselor Johnson.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with both counselors, and. I think it's really important that. We, we vote on something, and even as, even if it's something that you're. Really not in fo- in favor of, that we go on. Support it and go to the next issue, you know, and, and that's, that's not easy to do. And uh, so, but I do agree with. Not protecting staff, but maybe being really cognizant of, of what we give them to do and. Not make them do, give them instructions, and then at the next meeting or two or whatever, that we go back and. And say, oh, well, we want something different, because that really doubles their work, so um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. Let's see, now the mayor wants to go last, so still have three others we need to hear from. Counselor Olson, do you want to chime in?
Okay. Uh, back in the good old days, we used to have a phone list of all our city employees. And I think it helps to uh. Uh, be, to some semblance, be acquainted with the people that are, uh, trying to do what we're asking them to do. And uh, there's all kinds of reasons not to have a city phone book like this. But I, for one, would certainly approve, uh, appreciate having one.
Okay, so, um, well, getting back to the roles and responsibilities that we were talking about last time. One of the things we talked about was making sure that communication does flow through the, the city manager, so I don't know what you guys currently. Currently have in place, but um, it sounds like may, maybe that's different than the, the, having the phone list. But we'll, I'll, I'll capture that and. Can have some more discussion when this team agreement comes forward, I suppose.
So I think Counselor Johnson had something else.
Oh, Counselor Johnson, did you have another? Let's see, we had, still haven't heard from, we need to hear from Counselor Novak and Counselor Bartholomew. Counselor Bartholomew's gonna chime in, go ahead.
Uh, I appreciate the request to listen to each other and to be very thoughtful in our. In. In understanding the. The roles that the staff has in doing their jobs. Um, I think this, being mindful of, of them and what is needed for them to do their jobs. Is helpful, because then when we deliberate and make decisions. Uh, we go, we do so thoroughly and thoughtfully. Um, because like, uh, it, like was stated. Uh, we don't want to double our own work as well as especially doubling everybody else's work and. Creating a logjam. And, and, and hopefully, you know, we are looking towards the future, because that's what I feel the. The council is here for is to look towards the future and what will help make this city. Um. Be its best, that's what the strategic planning is, that's what our vision and mission is for, and so. To look forward and make choices based on what is best for the future. Um, and I'm hoping that we can continue to look that way and not get bogged down by the stuff that staff is supposed to do. Uh, you know, the little, you know, the little things that staff can do. And, and lose, lose our vision, so.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bartholomew. Counselor Novak?
Uh, I know this is rare and wondrous, but I'm almost at a loss for words. Um. It's, from what I'm hearing, it's sounding like we're making staff's life a nightmare, and I, I, I. Am I misunderstanding what I'm hearing? I'm hearing, I'm hearing we need to be mindful of staff, we don't want to make staff do twice as much work. Well, nobody wants to make staff do twice as much work or, or whatever. Um. Am I missing something? Have we been doing, um, I mean, I don't know, I, I think communication is.
It's more general, I, I think that's what I got from it.
What, what I'm hearing, it's what you're getting, is that we're making their lives hard?
No, no, I'm just serious, it's more, let's be mindful of the staff's workload, that's, I'm not here, we're doing.
Yeah, well, I, I didn't think we weren't, is my point. I didn't realize we weren't being mindful of their workload. Um, so, you know, with all due respect to everyone on staff, and some of you I know and have sat down with and dearly love, others of you I still haven't met. Face to face. Um, I, I'm a big fan of communication, and it's been very, very challenging over the last. Uh, you know, since I came on in uh, to, this last year. Because of all the lockdown, meet you behind a screen, whatever stuff, I feel like, um. You know, I would be much further along had we been able to meet more face to face and in person, uh, but all that aside, um. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not here to make anyone's life any harder or to heap an extra workload on anyone. I am here, as Counselor Bartholomew said, I think we all are here because we want what's best for our city. And these special meetings that we're having to review the strategic plan, to look toward the future. These things, this time that we're giving, this work that, that we're all doing is with. Every hope and intention of making life better for people who live in our city, including ourselves. Um, so, I guess, I, um, all I'm gonna say with what we, regard to what I need. When dealing with these things that we're discussing, both now and in the future, is just. Um, I think Counselor Smith said, listening to one another. I think we do that. I think that we do that pretty well. Given especially the limitations and the challenges that we faced in the last year. Um, I think that we just need to, to take every advantage of every opportunity to do that more. I, I still, as I said, there are people on staff I have yet to meet, and that's kind of frustrating to me, but that's just been life in this last year. So, um, staff, I appreciate you, fellow counselors, I appreciate you, Sarah Wilson Singer, I appreciate Sarah Singer Wilson. I appreciate you, you know, I, I'm, and I, I have sat down. Um, with the city manager multiple times, I, I, I want to hear from everyone. I know that we will work together. I have ex- every expectation that we will listen to one another. I have every expectation. That um, I'm gonna continue to be voted down on certain things, and I'm gonna have to roll with it, you know? Um, so, I guess, I, I just, I don't, I think we're gonna, we're gonna keep going and doing the best we can.
All right, thanks, Counselor Novak, and.
Thank you, Counselor.
Last but not least, Mayor Johnson?
So every counselor here made very great points about what our role is in the city of Albany. We're all elected officials, we're also servant leaders of this city. There's seven of us, six of us city councillors, and myself as the mayor, and our job is to govern, our job is to lead. Our job is to be e- e- engaged with our constituency, so I recommend, I offer that all of us need to do more outreach to our citizenry. And talk to them, engage them in conversation. Take a few moments of your week or every two weeks and say, I'm gonna be at this coffee shop for two hours, come join me for a cup of coffee. Believe me, I'm living it. They show up and they want to share what's going on in their communities, they want to see what we're doing. And I look, I look forward to those opportunities, and also you have schools in your neighborhoods and your, your areas. These young folks are watching us. Matthew and I went to West Albany High School, and the seniors and juniors and sophomores and freshmen in that room. They are watching us, they're watching us because we are making decisions for their children and their grandchildren. So please engage with them, ask, ask, the school system is ready for us to be involved. Please reach out to Matthew, and he'll set up time with the schools and their outreach person, because it's really important that they know that we're working on their behalf as well. As well as the west, the rest of the city. So with that, I'll shut up now, and Sarah, I wanna thank you for the work that you're doing with your team, staff. You know, you have a hard job, fifty thousand plus people and less than four hundred of you. We know your job is tough, but our job is also to be here for you as your, your city councilors and mayor. And Peter, you execute, and we'll keep passing down the things that we need to get done, and support you as far as your, your efforts, and city attorney saying things, and so the chiefs. And all the directors, that's it, I think I'm done.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Um, well, we were able to get through our, our agenda, our, wrap up our agenda from the fifteenth, so thank you for. Your efforts in refining all of those wonderful ideas that you shared into some actions. We'll be using that, as I mentioned, to formulate some questions for the community. Um, as, as staff prepares to go out and ask them about the future and what they wanna see for the strategic plan. And we'll get a summary report put together of the work that we've done up to this point, and we'll be back for some additional updates with the council as we work through the strategic plan process. Uh, Peter, is there anything you'd like to share in closing?
I'll just add my thanks to yours for, uh, the council's attention this evening and their spirited discussion. And, uh, we, uh, I, I wanna assure all of you that, uh, from my perspective, it's an honor to work for the city, and. Nobody's life is, is a nightmare, other than the stress that everybody's going through with the pandemic right now, so, uh, it's an honor to work for you all. In most traditional organizations, uh, they say it's not a good thing to have more than one boss, I have seven, and I'm grateful for all of you, thanks for your efforts this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Great, well, I, I think that wraps up our business for tonight, and I don't know if the mayor adjourns the meeting at this point, or if you guys have anything else on the agenda?
I think.
On the agenda. This was it.
This is it, all right.
Yeah.
But I think, I think he may have froze, and, and we may have lost.
Okay. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.